Okay, we'll open the meeting. It is 6:02. Will you please join me at the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation and God, with the invisible liberty of justice for all. Thank you. The minutes of November 18th, what is the wish of the board?
Moved as written.
Seconded.
We have a motion second. Any corrections to the minutes? Cheryl, you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, see none? All who's in favor say aye. Of the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. For a citizens' comments.
Kevin Verbil, McCarran Road. Mister Chairman and members of the Board, it has been eight months since the voters of Deerfield School District instructed the Deerfield School Board as to the will of the people. Despite repeated pleas, protestations, and presentations based upon the facts and the law, this message has fallen upon deaf ears. The Deerfield School Board, the most local form of government entrusted with the most sacred of public duties, the education of our children, has chosen to abrogate the will of the people which it was elected and sworn to faithfully represent. It is for this reason that concerned citizens of the Deerfield School District are once again forced to petition in our ongoing struggle for address. I present to you more than adequate number of signatures to have the following placed on the 2016 Deerfield School District warrant. We the undersigned hereby petition the Deerfield School Board to place the following article on the next Deerfield School District warrant and ballot. Due to the lack of any meaningful action by the Deerfield School Board relative to a warrant article of similar language passed by a majority of the voters during the March 2015 Deerfield election, we again ask, shall the Deerfield School District vote to reject and immediately discontinue participation in the Common Core State Standards and the Smarter Balance Assessment in favor of our own locally-developed Deerfield School District academic standards and assessments? And recommend that the School Board form a committee consisting of representatives from the School Board, school administrators, teachers, and community members to develop the Deerfield School District academic standards and assessments. I must inform you that almost to a person, everyone with whom I have discussed this matter, thought that this question had already been decided and were shocked and disgusted by the fact that the Deerfield School Board has done nothing to represent, to respect, the will and voice of the people. You are undermining the people's faith, trust, and confidence in local representative government. You should think about that fact long and hard before you consider running for reelection for this or any other elected office. Here is yet another reason to support the already-passed warrant article as well as the proposed warrant article. I was not able to find the original source of the following, nonetheless, it is no less germane. Smarter Balance Assessment results were released by the New Hampshire Department of Education on November 12, 2015. However, parents are not going to be allowed to review and inspect their child's Smarter Balance Assessment materials in violation of state law RSA 193-C:10. For the most part, these assessments were administered online, so districts no longer have any assessment materials on hand. Districts are blaming this violation of parental rights on the Smarter Balance consortia which has not released individual assessment questions. Why would any district administer a statewide assessment without being able to provide transparency and accountability to parents, which is required by state law? Why would the state mandate a statewide assessment that provides parents with no transparency or accountability, which is required by state law? Chapter 193-C, Statewide Education Improvement and Assessment Program, Accessibility of Assessment Materials. After the assessment results are released by the department, a pupil's parent or legal guardian shall have the right to inspect and review the pupil's assessment, including the questions asked, the pupil's answers, instructions or directions to that pupil, and other supplementary materials related to or used to administer the pupil's assessment. A parent or legal guardian shall direct a request for inspection or review to the pupil's school, and the school shall comply, shall comply, with such a request within 45 days of its receipt. The Department of Education shall make available released assessment items on the department's website as soon as possible after the statewide assessment results are released. The Commissioner shall adopt rules pursuant to RSA 541-A to implement procedures for the review and inspection of assessment materials. These rules shall provide parents and legal guardians with no fewer rights to them as accorded under the Family Education and Privacy Rights Act 20 U.S. Code 1232G. And the source of that is 2014. So, while Mister Menard, member Menard, has tried to make cogent arguments as to following state law, it is clear that the Smarter Balance is not following state law. And so that should be heavily considered by this School Board. With that, I will deliver to the Chairman the more than sufficient signatures to have it placed on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Verbil. So the records rules show that we are receipt of a petition warrant article with, regarding to the information that Mister Verbil had just spoken. Anything else, citizens' comments? Okay. Gender review. Does the Board want to move anything around the gender or add anything to it? Seen on consent items.
Peter.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no. It'll come under the budget. Thank you.
Consent items?
Passing around one request for early retirement from Ellen O'Donnell. The deadline is December 1st, and this is the only request that we have received, and it would be effective for the end of the 1819 school year.
Give you a couple minutes to read it. Everything fine? What is the wish of the Board as far as the request?
I move that we accept the request as written with reluctance.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this the first one for 218-219?
Yes.
Could just relay that Ellen's a great asset to this town, and she will be missed.
Now she is, yes. So all who's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Travel basketball. Mister Hopkins and Miss Shiner. Timer, sorry.
Thanks for putting us on the agenda. So we've been working with Parks and Rec Department around creating a travel program in Deerfield. We've had a fairly successful program for the Deerfield Travel Basketball Program. And what Parks and Rec has granted us is the ability to, a group of parents to now run the travel program instead of directly with the Parks and Rec. But we are in concert with them, and we are, we have spoken with Cindy Hansen about what it would take to use the gym. And what we're asking for is, we're starting a program where that'll be tryouts for everyone and then run the travel program. We understand that there's a charge for the gym, for anyone that, outside groups that come into the, and want to use the facility. What we're asking for is forgiveness on the fees for the gym. We will be carrying insurance, and we will be running the program in concert with Cindy Hansen. She has granted us the same, I guess, rights or abilities as the Parks and Rec Department. So we understand what it takes to maintain the gym, what we're going to do with the gym, and how to keep that clean, et cetera, and maintain that. Again, we're going to carry the insurance as well for the team, and so what we're here today for is to ask any kind of forgiveness for the gym, keeping the fees down for the parents and the participants of the travel program.
Okay, any comments from the Board? Questions?
So this is, if I'm correct, this is a continuation of a program that has gone on in town for years, but it is now being run by parents, correct?
Correct. So the Parks and Rec Department has decided to let a group of parents run it. We're still going to participate in the Christmas Classic or the Holiday Classic Basketball Tournament, et cetera. But yes, the parents will be running it now for the Parks and Rec Department or Joe Manzi.
I have a question. Do you know if you'd be starting during the Parks and Rec season?
We would like the option to do that. We are looking at, we've already talked to a couple of neighboring towns where we can put together some teams and do some scrimmages, and the, obviously, the full swing of things will start after the season, but we would like the option to be able to practice and run some scrimmages in the facility prior to the, well, prior to the end of the season.
So like January, February?
You know, I don't have the dates clear on when the end of the season is, but, you know, even if there are opportunities during the season in December, I mean, normally, I think we'll probably run it in January, December, and most of the games are, I mean, January, February, that's where most of the games are. But, you know, Auburn wanted to run some scrimmages even as early as December. So we'd like the option to be able to put some kids together and the option of kids coming out, and if they're available, play in some scrimmages games.
Your, the participants in the program, are they all strictly kids from Deerfield? Are you going to be trying to bring in kids from other towns, or is it just Deerfield?
This is a Deerfield-based travel program. We don't, we haven't actually discussed bringing any other kids in from other towns. I know that in our Parks and Rec Department, kids have the option to opt in. I would say that this is strictly a Deerfield, you know, travel program. So I'm not sure if technically, you know, actually, we don't fall under any technical guidelines, I believe, with regards to bringing other kids in, but we're going to keep this within Deerfield. We actually haven't discussed that internally, but...
No, I'm just, I'm looking at how you're categorized as...
Right. We're just looking at options that we...
So, yeah, I wouldn't, we haven't said, hey, let's bring in, you know, some of the best players, hey Scott, from Auburn and Candy, et cetera, but Deerfield only, so...
Deerfield only?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
I'd make a motion that we waive the fees associated.
I have a question before that.
Sure.
Oh, you can't?
No.
No.
It's just Deerfield, they have to be, it has to be a town team, or you won't be in a travel tournament. Yeah, it's just Deerfield only.
All right. There you go.
So we just thrashed out the policy at the behest of the school, and we had said, you know, priority would be, you know, focus in PTO groups, Deerfield governmental bodies, that'd be the Parks and Rec, and then all other nonprofit organizations. I remember we went over this. A nonprofit is defined for its purpose of this policy as organizations registered as official nonprofit entities by the state of New Hampshire, or informally organized Deerfield-based organizations whose purpose is solely community service. So my question is, are you, have you registered with the state yet? Have you reached that level of nonprofit?
Are you speaking in line?
Yeah, no, we have, I'm sorry, I'm Scott Shimer. We haven't, we don't, we really don't want to do paperwork for 501(c)(3). We don't want to go through that. We just want to give the kids a chance to play basketball. We're a break-even. We're going to charge them exactly what it costs, and that's our goal here. So I don't know where we can fit in that umbrella, but we just don't, it's just a bunch of parents trying to figure out how to get the kids to play basketball.
So my follow-up question is, how, under what umbrella would you have the insurance? Liability insurance?
Yeah, we had, we have some of the parents looking into the insurance costs, and you can get different programs. They actually found out if we call ourselves a Deerfield Travel Program, it's fairly inexpensive to get an insurance program for the number of kids we have.
Liability, naming the school as an additional insurance.
Correct, yeah. Actually, it seemed like that was the most cost-effective. It wasn't a huge cost for us. Really, the only, the only cost we're concerned about is the cost to use the school, because if we have to pay the rate of $50 an hour, whatever it was, it would cost parents in the ballpark of $600 or $700 for a season, which is way more than what it should be. Without the fees, I think we can get away with $60 to $100, which includes all the travel and the insurance costs, so... Really, it was only cost prohibitive if we had the fees for the gym.
So, you know, I don't have a, I don't have an issue waiving the fee for a program that's kind of coming out of Parks and Rec and has continuity in the community, and it seems to be an organization that is falling under the, you know, the group from Deerfield whose, you know, organization's purpose is solely community service.
Yeah. Which, so if you look at the policy, category C, category D, which is the all other organizations, all other organizations and groups, is really the only billed, billable category in the policy. So if you guys are working with Deerfield's students, you would be, as the policy's written, you would fall into that C category anyway.
Right.
So that's partially why I asked that question.
Which does put you guys at a lower level than the Parks and Rec Department, which you're aware of.
Could I? Sorry, Jack, one quick thing. So we're not, and I know you asked a question about like practice, like, we're not competing with Parks and Rec. I coach for Parks and Rec, Jim cooks Parks and Rec. Our kids all play for Parks and Rec. We're not competing with their practice time. We'd like to go in when they don't have gym time to get the kids kind of prepared, but we're not, they have first right of all gym time.
Well, and that's the way the policy is written.
Exactly, yeah.
The Parks and Rec supersedes you on any...
Absolutely.
Any usage of the gym, if they've slotted into it.
Right.
It's theirs. The, I guess, one of the questions I have, you mentioned as far as tryouts, are you talking an exclusive team? Are you talking, I mean, anyone who comes into...
Yeah, actually, that sort of bears right into the reason I came tonight. So I'm here for Parks and Rec, sort of on my initiative, but we had a meeting last night, and everyone supported this position. The, the travel program has been a part of Parks and Rec in the past, and it's been difficult for Joe Manzi because it sort of led to making teams that were too big and kids couldn't get playing time, because we're trying to balance into the Parks and Rec approach to use sports, where everybody who wants to be in a sport, there's a place for them. But in fact, all of the surrounding towns have travel programs where we, and none of them operate as part of Parks and Rec that I know of, and I know a lot of them don't. And it's an approach to sport that, you know, you're looking, it's more like the way you would run a high school varsity team, where tryouts make sense, you want kids who have developed some skills, have put in time, and you're working, you know, kind of a different way with kids. It's a different approach than Parks and Rec or than Deerfield, in fact, has for the most part with the teams in the school, but it's a really legitimate approach. It works really well for a lot of coaches and a lot of parents and a lot of kids, and they learn a lot. They learn a lot of sport, that the, they learn to play really well, and they learn a lot of discipline, and so I want to argue, and I think Parks and Recs want to argue, that in having a, sort of a big tent for sports and ways of being with kids in Deerfield, and for validating a different approach, which I have in fact practiced myself when I was coaching travel soccer, you know, 15 and 20 years ago, I think this is really legitimate stuff. It's a really good thing for Deerfield. It's good for a lot of kids, and I think operating independently in Parks and Rec is the right way to go, but I hope that you can support this as a Deerfield program. It really has to be just Deerfield kids, or they won't be able to go to the tournaments they want to go to. They'll be like an AAU team or something. And so anyway, it was unanimous in Parks and Rec that we wanted to encourage you to offer them gym time as well. We think what they're doing is a great thing and that it needs to operate in the way that they're doing it. We want to try this for a year and see how it goes.
So what you're saying is that this team is going to be exclusive of, for all practical purposes, let's just say you decide five, five players per team. That's it.
Well, it'd probably be more like eight or 11 or something, but right.
But it's not the normal Deerfield, what the philosophy of the Deerfield School Board has been for years, that everyone who wants to be able to play is able to play.
Everybody who wants to be able to play will be able to play in the rec program, but when it comes to travel...
Talking this program here, not the rec program.
When it comes to travel, which...
This program here.
Most of their season and travel is after rec, and it will, it will be selective. That's true.
That is not the Deerfield School Board's policy for following, you know, I, where I have the issue is you want us to come through with the ability to waive the fees at the school. The Deerfield School Board's policy over the years, philosophy over the years, is anyone who wants to play gets to play. And now you're basically kind of twisting it around a little bit.
I just want to be clear, though, in the past, Parks and Rec travel program was a tryout system where they had cuts and evaluations. So it's no different than what Parks and Rec has done for as long as I've been a part of it for the past five or six years.
But I want to come at that in a really different way, which is to say, I support the approach that you're outlining for kids at this age, and that's what I practice when I'm coaching, but I think that what is represented in this travel program, and I could easily be part of a similar travel program in soccer, in truth, is also a legitimate approach. And I think that if we get, if we are dogmatic about our way of being with kids and not acknowledging that there are, there is other, there are other ways which are also really valid and really work for a lot of people, and I think you could find a lot of parents and a lot of kids who are really pleased with the experience they get out of these programs, that we should also allow that. We should just see that that is legitimate. I think there are places to draw lines. We can't have a program that tolerates disrespect for officials, no matter what. There are places to draw lines, but I don't think the place to draw a line of, we can't support that, we can't encourage that in our town, is that there be select teams. Kids are trying to develop skills sufficient to qualify for teams in high school and stuff like that, and these are kids who are really dedicated to the game. A lot of the way you pick the kids to be on these teams are the ones who are going to show up every time and work hard, you know, and...
There's a lesson to be taught there.
Yeah, that's not a bad thing. I think a lot of good comes out of this program, and I want to see Deerfield support it. I want to see us to be a community that's accepting of different approaches to kids that are, that are also legitimate approaches to kids, and not say it has to be only my way, which is a way that I've written a policy for the Parks and Rec Commission about, which is exactly that, that kids, that everybody gets a reasonable amount of participation in every game. That's, everything that operates for us is supposed to run that way. That's the reason, that's largely the reason for not wanting travel to be under the Parks and Rec umbrella, but to be separate, so that when parents are upset with how things go, it doesn't come to Joe Manzi.
I just have an additional question. Dirk, you had mentioned that you'd spoken with Cindy about cleaning. That would be a concern for me. The, the maintenance of the facilities, obviously, it's getting additional use. How do you guys envision working with the janitorial department if we waive the fees in maintaining?
Sure, and I know we've done this in the past. I mean, we'd be very happy with the waiver, to the point where we'll sweep up after we're done, we'll clean the bleachers, push everything in. It'll look exactly how it was before we came in. And so we've had that responsibility with Parks and Rec for the last five or six years. We would have no problem accepting that responsibility and maintaining it.
Jim, were you asking about the user fees? Is that what you...
Yeah. Well, it's part of the user fees, yes.
Well, there's a cleanup fee, too.
How many, how many teams do you envision?
It's a good question. Right now, we have definitely a five, six boys team, a single team. We'd like to do a five, six girls team because there's such a great group of girls involved as well. So we're looking at those two teams at this point in time that would be participating. If we find that there's a big push for seven, eight, I don't think there will be because there's a lot less kids, or three, four, we could certainly entertain it if there, as long as there was families that came through that wanted to support it. But right now, I think we're looking at a five, six boys and a five, six girls.
You're looking at two teams, and then how much time are you looking for on a weekly basis per team?
Yeah, I think in the month of December, we'll probably be somewhere in the ballpark of maybe an hour per week, tops.
Is that in two sessions or one session?
I was, I was thinking four one-hour sessions, but if we need to do two, two-hour, whatever's best for everybody, just to bring the kids together. January, I'd love to see it ramp up a little bit, where we get into the ballpark of maybe eight to 12 hours per month. And then February, we'll probably see it decline a little bit because that's when the tournaments will start. So once we start the tournaments, we won't be utilizing the gym as much. And then once we get into March, we'll probably see a very small amount of usage, and by the end of March, usually, our travel season's done.
When do you envision having these tryouts? Have they been broadly advertised, and...
We haven't done anything. We want to make sure that it was even feasible.
Okay.
So at this point, our first, really, our first step, we've done some of the investigation on the insurance side. We've wanted to speak with you all to see if it was feasible. Really, if we can't get the waiver, there's not going to be a, we can't, I'm not going to charge families $600, whatever it is. I'm not going to pay $600, so it's really an all or nothing kind of thing. If we can't do it, then we're not going to have a travel season.
You had said that you were going to do the Parks and Rec, the Deerfield Classic?
Excuse me?
You were going to do the Deerfield Classic?
Definitely.
Were you planning another tournament?
Yeah, hopefully, there'll be five tournaments. The ones we've done in the past are usually York, Laconia, Kittery, Marshwood, and then Deerfield. So probably, we'll probably do exactly what we've done for the past five years.
Okay, so outside the Deerfield Hoop Classic, there'll be more at the Deerfield School or just the Deerfield?
No, no, not, we go to the other schools. So the only one at the Deerfield School will be the Hoops Classic, correct? And that'll still be managed by Mister Manzi and the Parks and Rec.
Is that a four-day or five-day?
I think somewhere in there, yeah. But we won't have anything to do with that. That'll actually be done by the Parks and Rec Department.
Two-week tournament.
As far as the scheduling for that would be through me, you said through Mister Manzi?
Yeah, we will have absolutely nothing to do with the Hoop Classic. That's all done by Parks and Rec.
Okay, any further discussions of the Board?
Paul, do you know what Cindy's opinion is this, on this is? I was hoping she'd be here, but she's not.
I think her concern is just the scheduling, the tight scheduling. It's already tight. Adding more people in is going to have to require some flexibility on everybody's part.
But she could work with if they're definitely class in the C category, so they'd be behind the Parks and Rec and school activities.
I did speak to Cindy, and she was perfectly fine with working with you guys in scheduling.
Oh, great, thank you.
She just wants to make, just make sure that we knew when the times would be, because the schedule's pretty fluent between December and January with the school, as you well know.
Yep.
But she's perfectly fine with, you know, helping out with the scheduling.
Great, thank you.
She couldn't be here tonight, but I did have her email it over and some of us have seen that, so.
Have you filled out the application yet?
Have you filled out the application?
For, for the waiver?
For the use of the facility.
I don't think so. I haven't. Did you, Dirk? No.
So, I would, I guess I probably just need to make a motion to spin it out. I would move that we, a lot, that we waive the fees for Deerfield's travel league and categorize them as a category C user, with the understanding that they have a third-place position as far as accessing the gym, and it has to work within the schedules that Cindy has available, and they provide adequate insurance, and that the facility is maintained and kept to the standards they receive. Technically, we have a motion on the table right now. Oh, we do? Oh, jeez. The gym goes a little short and sweet.
I, I agree with the wording of Zach's, and...
So why don't you withdraw yours?
I will withdraw my motion and allow you to...
Could you add pending a successful, I mean, acceptable application? Everything's got to be proper followers.
And with, and with the caveat that, that the... And with, and with the caveat that the janitorial maintenance needs to be kept up.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you want me to hack at that again?
Yes, please, go for it.
I move, all right, so I'm going to make a motion that we allow the Deerfield Travel League access to the facilities as a category C user, with the understanding that they will provide a complete application, adequate insurance, and that the facilities will be maintained and kept clean and in acceptable condition.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion in the motion?
Did you have the insurance in there?
Yes.
Yes, he did. I've seen no other discussion. Alls in favor of the motion say aye.
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 As opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Can I just ask a quick question of where the application, does it go to you all or does it go to Cindy?
It'd be through the-
Through administration.
Through administration.
Right. And the insurance, does that also go through the administration?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, board reports, executive board meeting. There really has not, the executive board has not met, and so we have nothing to report.
December 10th.
December 10th, maybe. Principals report, Mr. Yerzak. You're right.
What you're getting right now is a copy of a PowerPoint, or Google presentation, actually, since we don't have an ability to be able to project anything here. What I did was I created a presentation in order to be able to share, educate you on the Smarter Balance test results that have been distributed to families at this point and that teachers are working with. And if this, I would be happy to get feedback from you if there's anything that needs to change. And if this seems okay, then we can put this on our school's website in order to help further educate parents as far as what the Smarter Balance testing is all about and how our results compare to other, other places. So the first, the first slide that talks about parent video, obviously, there's not a video here, but this link, we've scoured the web, we've scoured every place in order to be able to try to find some educational materials that would, would help parents understand what the test is and what it is not. And this video, we thought, was pretty beneficial. So there's actually a link, and I can share this PowerPoint with you right away. It is, it was made for California, but it really, we thought that of all the videos that we've looked at, it seems to be a good explanation. The next thing where it says general SBAC information, I think one of the things to think about is the fact that this is not the NECAP test, which is what we used to give our kids from third through eighth grade and 11th grade. It is a very different test. It is adaptive within grade levels, which means that kids who take the test do not all get the same questions at the same time. It starts out with, if you are a fourth-grade student, you're taking a fourth-grade test, it starts out with typical fourth-grade questions. If students are successful with those, it tends to give them more rigorous questions. If kids are struggling, it gives them a little bit easier questions in order to be able to try and figure out where kids are educationally. And the piece to remember also is just like when the NECAP test started, the NECAP was put in place in order to be able to measure a school's ability to monitor whether or not the curriculum was matching the standards that were in place in the state at the time. That's what the Smarter Balance test does also. It's intended to be able to measure the standards that are being taught in schools. There are three buzzwords that are important to remember in this test: subjects, claims, and targets. The subjects, we'll get into those on the next slide. There are two subject areas where, the one that, the slide that says SBAC claims, students were tested in English Language Arts and in math. Those are the subject areas. And then the claims, in each of those areas, there are four claims. So under English Language Arts, the information that was tested, students were tested on, was in the area of reading and writing and speaking and listening, and then research. And then the four claims under math are concepts and procedures, problem solving, communicating, and reasoning, and modeling and data analysis. You with me so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The claims incorporate multiple standards and targets. Is this assessment intends, intends to assess how students are integrating skills and concepts. So it's not like the, the reading, the targets in, under the English Language Arts, in the area of reading, were strictly reading questions. There may be some that have pulled in other areas of English Language Arts as well. So there's a lot of overlap, and application is a big piece of this test. The next two slides have the literacy claims written out and the math, literacy claims and math claims. So I'm not going to read all of them, but basically, like if you look at claim number one in the area of reading, it says students can read closely and analytically to comprehend a range of increasingly complex literacy, literary and informational texts. Explains what writing is about, explains what speaking and listening means, and explains what research is. And then in the math claims, it talks about concepts and procedures, what that means, problem solving. Example is students can solve a range of complex, well-posed problems in pure and applied mathematics, making productive use of knowledge and problem-solving strategies. The other two claims, communicating, reasoning, modeling, and data analysis. So far, so good. I'll take that as a yes and move on to-
Yes. Go for it.
Okay. The next one talks, it breaks, it takes that same chart that you saw previously, but it adds a little bit more. Up at the top where it says the subject is broken down into claims, the claims are made up of targets, and the targets are based on the standards. And again, English Language Arts and math, and then the four areas, the four claims under each area. And then this slide has targets underneath, and it talks about the number of target areas that fed into each of those areas. So in, under reading, for instance, it talks about 14 targets. There are 14 areas that these developers, and mind you, the developers who created this test were practicing educators. They weren't politicians. They were, they were people from the trenches that they wanted to target their questions and items in order to be able to access information across the standards. So the assessment items in the tasks that students answer on the test target multiple standards, as I said before. The next slide gives an example of a claim. So in the first column where it says ELA, claim number one is the area of reading. The first target is language use, so interpreting figurative language, literary devices, or connotative meaning of words and phrases that are used in context, and the impact of those word choices on meaning or tone. And it connects to the standards, the Common Core standards that are integrated in our curriculum, our locally built curriculum at DCS. So standard number five, L is for literacy, claim number five, 5A and 5B. So those are the standards that fed into the target, which are under the umbrella of that claim. That's an example of a reading one. And then the next slide is a, an example of a math claim. So this math claim example that we pulled was math claim number three, communicating reasoning. The target was state logical assumptions being used. It addresses standard number three, numbers and functions, one, two, three, and seven. Again, you can see how there are multiple, multiple standards that are being tested by one target in an area.
How many, how many questions per area would the kids expect to get? Are they-
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
You're reading ahead.
Sorry.
Reading ahead. Okay, in the score reporting section, scoring in each of the English Language Arts or Mathematics subjects are broken down into four different levels. So level four is a thorough understanding of that subject. Level three is inadequate understanding, can be translated into proficient or above. Level two is partial understanding, and level one is minimal understanding of, and the ability to apply English Language Arts and math knowledge and skills needed for success in college and careers as specified in the Common Core State Standards. Here's what I'm trying to get. Smarter Balance consists of roughly 35 questions in math and approximately 40 questions in Language Arts, plus the performance task, performance tasks, which are comparable to previous tests. Since the assessment is computer-adaptive, there's not an exact number of questions that students can get. So a student may have, there are questions of different types, different depth of knowledge. So a depth of knowledge one could be, you know, two plus two equals four. It's just a straight recall question as opposed to a higher-order thinking question with depth of knowledge four. So Patty and I may take the same grade level test. She may have had two depth of knowledge question of four and one depth of knowledge two. So she could have potentially had 10 points. I could have had six depth of knowledge questions, depth of knowledge one question, and one depth of knowledge four question. So the types of questions that I have may be different than the types of questions that she had. So I may have, if I have those six ones and a four, I actually have five questions. She actually only had three. So it's, so you can't, so it's difficult in order to be able to, you know, compare student to student. But again, the nature of that test was not, it's not designed for student success so much as it is about curriculum adherence and success with the, with the standards.
And there's an algorithm that drives the questions?
Yes. Okay.
I'm not going to ask you what the algorithm is.
You can ask, but I won't be able to answer that one.
The next two slides are the ELA cut scores, and these were designed by the Department of Education in New Hampshire. So these are New Hampshire's cut scores in English Language Arts and in, so if we look at the English Language Arts example first, for instance, if you are a third, they are all between 2,000 and 3,000 is the score range. I can't tell you why they chose that magic number as opposed to zero to 1,000 or a million to whatever. So if you were a student in grade three and you had a 200, 2,779 score, you wouldn't, you can follow that chart and figure out where you would end up falling. Well, so it was looking at that 2,779. If you were in grade five, that would be a level four for you. So any, so it's the same two, it's the same thousand points scale range, but based on the grade level, it would determine where you are based on your, your particular chronological age.
So probably you took the test, you had a certain point scored, and they would add up to some, something like this?
Yeah, and you'll see an example of the parent's score, what it actually looks like.
What does cut mean? Why do, why do, why do they say cut?
Break, it's like the break number?
Yeah, it's the break point.
Right.
From here to here, and then they cut it off, and then they do the next section. So grade three, for instance, they cut it off at 26, 23.
So nobody, no student-
Or 24, 90, and then 24, 89. Right, no one got higher than that.
So no student theoretically in grade three would get higher than 26, 23?
Correct. And my assumption here is this is based on the data that, that we have from our students in our state.
Do we have this slide by each, will we see these bigger, by any chance?
Yep. You can see it on the, on the PowerPoint, or I can certainly send it to you.
That'd be great. I just can't read this one.
Yeah.
And I have glasses on, Paul, so.
The next slide with the big red arrow on it actually has a, remember I told you that subject scores were reported on four levels, then the claim scores were reported on, on three levels, though. And, and in math, claim four is combined with claim two. And the reason for that is that there, it just was, there were not enough questions in those areas in order for them to feel statistically, it was a statistically valid answer or points assignment. So they lumped together that modeling and data analysis and problem solving. So when you're looking at, if, when educators look at all of this data, they would look at the fact that there are only three target areas in math. So problem solving and modeling and data analysis. If that was a, and we, we are in the process of doing this, analyzing our own data to look at where our school's strengths are. When we look at math, we are looking at only three target areas instead of four. And that's the reason for that is because there just is not enough information in, to break those math questions into those four areas.
Is it presumed that next year there would be enough information, more something or other?
Don't know that. Well, if we look at the chart, the fourth grade math, you can score very well on, right? Yep.
Now, if you could explain this concept a little bit more to me in regards to combining those two categories. There's not enough information, I don't, were there just not enough questions asked, or?
Yeah.
Okay, and is that a fault of the test, or?
I don't think so. I think it's the way it was designed. If you look at the numbers underneath, where it says the number of targets that they were in each of those areas, I think it's the way it was designed. So like under reading, for instance, there were 14 targets. In writing, there were seven, between seven and nine. Speaking and listening, more diff, you know, the kids listen to an audio excerpt. So, you know, how much speaking and listening can, can you do in order to be able to assess it on any type of a test?
Okay.
And the same thing with, you know, modeling and data analysis. I can't see what the number is underneath that section, but-
Is that a statewide combination of those two?
It is a statewide combination.
Okay.
So it's designed that way?
It's designed that way.
Am I the only one that doesn't think that makes any sense, or I need to reiterate it? Sorry, but I can't quite follow that. Just, so I mean, if we saw the test again, we'd, what are we getting from it?
Would they change, are you saying would they change the test next year to have more, more type, more different types of questions in math in order to have four targets?
The way it looks on here, I would hope between the third and fourth grade math that there would be some help.
Are you looking at the test?
I say that nicely, but, yeah, no, I'm, well, between here, and then I'm trying to look down here in terms of what the-
Are you looking over here or are you looking up here?
I'm looking at both, trying to look between two.
Okay, here, I don't know whether or not they would change the test in order to be able to do it. But again, looking, when we look at all of this information, the parent doesn't get all the way down to the nitty-gritty, because as, as we've said, you know, every, all children took so many different questions.
Okay.
So it becomes overwhelming that way. But when we look at it as a staff, you start by looking at how the kids did in English Language Arts overall and math overall, then you can look at the individual's claims, see how they did. And then you can drill down further, and you can look at the targets. And you can make some assumptions about, like you just did, when you're looking at the chart, the bar graph.
Right.
You know, that's the first red flag or the first celebration of looking at, you know, how well kids did, or wow, this grade is, is having some challenges, and why is that?
I mean, overall, everything was great, except for there was a huge gap there.
It was, yep.
So I mean-
And that wasn't really a surprise to us at all.
So, excuse me, Paul, I gather the tests were somewhat individualized in a sense that-
They were very individualized.
Student A maybe did one question and the answer was not correct, so the subsequent question was modified?
Yes.
So they maybe went down to a level three versus a level four, something like that? So it could be that the model was, the testing was a little bit not-
Erratic.
Not robust enough or something in this particular area.
I wouldn't say that. I think it's actually, it is pretty robust, I think, because, rather than just, you know, it pushes students. It's actually designed to push the students who are at the higher level because, you know, they continue to get more rigorous questions, more challenging questions, rather than, you know, the old paper and pencil test that we all took when we were in school. Everybody got the same test and-
But something might have been out of focus in terms of math, in terms of the, this area, that not enough, so not enough was generated, not enough data was generated in order to?
Maybe, but, you know, I think that we, there's certainly plenty of data out there in order to cut the discussion. And again, this is the first time we have official results from this.
Now, we, the, the test has kind of been done before a lot of the curriculum has been really reworked?
No.
Or is the curriculum-
No, we've actually been working with the, we, the staff has been working with the Common Core State Standards for a long time, and as curriculum has been revised, we've looked at the standards every time to find out whether or not we believe that they were rigorous enough and whether we needed to raise the level of rigor, or whether or not we thought that it was inappropriate, whether there were things missing. Every school district is, has the ability to be able to create a unique curriculum that's designed for their own individual school district, and we've done that. So we've been designing curriculum based on these standards. So I feel pretty confident that this is, that the test itself is testing what we're teaching- So I feel pretty confident that this is, that the test itself is testing what we're teaching.
Okay.
Currently. But again, you know, we are continuing to revise it. In fact, reading is coming up for revision. We have community members right now who are reading it along with staff members on Curriculum Review Board in order to give us their feedback on what they think, what questions they have, or what holes they might see in order to mesh that information with the information that we're getting from this test. But again, also keep in mind that this is one test, it's one point of data. So some kids do well on this kind of test, other kids don't do so well. So we don't, we don't brand the student as being a success or a failure based on the results of this one test. We just look at this as a school and see how we're doing and what we need to do differently. The next chart has that comparing subject level and claim level scoring. Parents, I think for the most part, should feel comfortable looking at that first bar where it says subject score levels. That's the English, your child, your child in your child's report would end up indicating that they were either a level four, three, two, or a one in English Language Arts or in math. But when you drill down further into that and look at the targets themselves in the claims, it, it becomes a little bit different. So it, it's either above, the middle band is either at or near proficiency, and then there's the below. So again, when you, for, for test analysis purposes, you would get a little bit more detailed in that, in that level. So that's why sometimes you may hear, you know, so, if you're really into, if you really want to get down and dirty with the test data stuff, you know, you may hear people talking about four levels of scores, and other times you may hear three. That's the reason why. So overall, your overall score, there's enough information, there's a whole big bucket of test questions that you took to give an honest overall assessment of how well you've done in English Language Arts. But if you start looking at, you may be a great reader, but you may be a, a weak writer. That's when you start looking at the individual target scores. Now you're working with less questions, so there's, you know, you gotta take that in a little bit more. You have to take a more serious look at that. So, so the confidence of how you did as an English Language Arts student, or as a math student, there's a lot of information there to indicate whether or not you're a level four, three, two, or one. If we want to start looking at the information that came from this one test, and you're looking in the area of English Language Arts, and you're looking at the reading scores only. Some may say that there's enough questions, some may want more questions. Again, like I said, you know, Patty had three questions, I had six. So you have to take that a little bit more with a broader lens. But again, you can, you know, you can drill down, you can look and see what.
So in reality, this is actually assessing the level that we're.
Right.
The teachers are.
Right.
So when we get these results, is there, is the faculty doing this, taking a look at it?
Yep, yep. The next chart is the red and blue bar graph that Shelley was talking about that's a little bit difficult to read. The very top two bars are in math and in English Language Arts. The blue bar is our school, and the red bar is the state. So if you look at the top one, the math score, the blue bar is longer than the red bar. We've done better than the state. In English Language Arts, DCS did better than the state also by a large, a large, has a longer bar than the red one. Then if you look at the individual bars, then underneath that, the first group is math. And I've actually got more data on, on the slide that's coming up. But in math and in English Language Arts, it goes from third grade through eighth grade. And you pointed out there are some grades that have more of a struggle. These are last year's test results. So the students, for instance, who, like where it says math grade three, those are our current fourth grade students. So it's one, it's, it's being reported this year on last year's grade, so.
When you, the, the bottom part of that chart, with the percentages, is that just proficiency against? Is that percentage of proficient?
Is that average total score on the scale of a hundred on the bottom?
Uh, no, that's the actual, that's the actual percentage.
So if I look at that, it's, it's approximately fifty percent proficient in math. Where do we, is there additional data that shows, obviously that's an average of the group as opposed to where are we on the high and the low side as well?
We've had, we've done a lot more work in the area of English Language Arts. We have two reading specialists, we have a reading teacher to help out. So there's a lot, we have, as a school, we've done a lot more work in analyzing data and really looking at trends and really working at improvement strategies in the area of English Language Arts. And that's why you see that the English Language Arts scores have always been better. If you look back at our NECAP test scores, you know, we had scores in the eighties and ninety percent proficient on those tests.
When you look at this data and you see something like we see in grade four for, for math, do you then put a plan in place to try to correct that? And what, what kind of detail goes into that?
We do it at two levels. We look at our curriculum, we try to figure out if there are holes in our curriculum as a, and again, you know, you have to look over, over time. We're a small school, so it's difficult to look at this population of kids and compare it to, you know, this, this fourth grade compared, the kids who are currently in fourth grade compared to the kids who were in fourth grade last year. It's a small population, so if you look at their demographics or their performance overall, you can tell that, you know, that there are maybe a higher number of kids that are struggling. Learners in a particular grade who make the aggregate data look bad. So we take that into account, but we also do look at, you know, this is what is expected to be taught in the fifth grade. How are the kids doing? And with further data, you know, further test results in the years to come, you'll be able to look to see whether or not it's a pattern that.
Well, that's, the next question is, is as we, as we layer this essentially, are we gonna see, say, that section of concern? Is that gonna chase its way all the way up through the grade level? Or is the, or are we?
Reality, the kid, the, the.
Like next year, am I gonna see the fifth grade group with the same, reflecting something similar? Or am I gonna see the same concern in fourth grade again?
You can probably see the fifth grade, the kids that are currently in the fifth grade struggle all the way through.
Okay.
Just because of the nature of the kids who are in those, in those grades. So there are some kids, some grade levels that are, you know, I'd love to, on the flip side, you know, I'd love to say that we're doing wonderful things, and that's why the blue bar is so high in some grade levels. But in reality, it's, it's also the nature of the kids. Sometimes there are just groups of kids in a particular grade that are more academically oriented, that take testing more seriously, that, you know, are more interested in typical school subjects. And so, you know, even if we did nothing, they would probably be, they would probably do great just, just because of who they are by nature. So we can do some curriculum tweaking, we can change instructional practices. But the reality is, we, you know, we have always seen these kind of trends. In fact, you know, I, I ask teachers to predict in advance, you know, what it will, what do you believe it will look like? And, you know, pretty much spot on, you know, teachers knew this grade will have lower, this will be a high scoring grade, this will be a low scoring grade. Math will be lower than English Language Arts is. So it, you know, it's looking at the whole picture of the kid. It's looking at other test results, like we're using STAR testing in order to get another point of data. We used to use measures of academic progress, NWEA, and we switched over to using STAR data instead. So we, we do a whole, you know, battery of tests, and we look at the whole picture.
Okay.
In order to try to make decisions.
Three questions, Paul. Is this roughly in line with what NECAP?
No. Test scores across the state probably nationally are much lower than, than the NECAP was for us. Like I said before, our kids were, you know, in the eighty and ninety percent, ninetieth percentile of, for proficiency.
But was the state in the roughly seventieth percentile then? Because this generally shows us a string.
We were higher than the state a lot of the times, most of the times.
So this is.
And I think we were probably higher than the state, hi- higher than, there was a bigger gap. I think we were more ahead of the state in math than we are now. But this was a much more rigorous test, and it was a very different kind of test than, than.
It's different data to a certain extent as well. And this, this, I don't understand, did you already go over this? Or I missed it? The, this.
I did, but I can do it again.
Thanks.
So if you are a parent receiving your child's test scores, you're really going to look at how well they did in the area of English Language Arts overall, in the area of math overall. So you're gonna have, see a choice of four different levels. Level three and four is proficiency and above. Level two and below are areas where you need, need some work.
Yeah.
So those are the four things that you will look at. But if you look at it as a teacher, you start looking at the individual components of the subject. So now, instead of just looking at reading for Peter Menard overall, I want to know how, or English Language Arts rather for Peter Menard, I want to know how Peter did as a reader, I want to know how he did as a writer also. So I want to look at the data that was collected on him as a reader. And I want to look at him in the area of writing. There's not as much, like you may have only taken a few questions in the area of writing. So we really don't want to put all our eggs in that one basket and say you are a very high performing, level four proficient writer because you got three questions right in the area of writing. So there's a little bit less, there's more of a standard deviation that you want to consider here. So rather than break it up into four, they mush those, those boundaries a little bit more, and that's why it's broken up into three in those individual claimed areas.
So you're saying a teacher would look at the bottom more, work with the bottom scale?
And a parent could too.
Parents probably look at the top.
A parent could certainly work with the teacher to look at that level of data as well.
Now, that is a curiosity question more than anything else, but the comparison that we have for our school by grade, is that something that the other schools in the SAU? Are the other schools in the SAU putting together a similar presentation?
Part two of this presentation.
I, I have some SAU scores. It doesn't look like there are so many reports that you can do, and it's really, the data is cumbersome. So I tried to just summarize it by grade level in the schools, but I have that for you.
Okay, and we can see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have just another curiosity question. If, in fact, we know the fifth grade, well, what was fourth grade last year is gonna be now fifth grade. Given what you said, we know that they're probably going to score, I'm assuming you meant they're gonna score low, probably on the math going forward?
As a group.
As a group.
Right. So when you look at individual kids, I mean, I, I certainly don't want to alarm people and say that all children in the fifth grade are not receiving adequate education and are not doing well. I mean, there are certainly some kids with very high test scores.
No, but in essence, this could be a tool.
Yes.
Right, so then could we try to catch that before they got to eighth grade, ninth grade, to help them at least get halfway there?
We have been. If you recall, that was one of the grades that we've talked over the years of having.
Yes, always.
Low, not, lower numbers is, you know, an important piece for that particular grade. And some people said, you know, those numbers are just too low, we need to, you need to lump them into less classes. And I said, give us some time in order to work with them and get to know them as learners, and see if we can figure out what they're all about. And we will eventually do that, and we did do that. We did go from four classes to three classes. You know, this is one of the, this is, you know, one of the byproducts maybe of that situation, so.
So four classes weren't good, and three is gonna be better?
Well, no, I'm, in my perfect world, I, you know, I wouldn't have advocated going for three, but I certainly understood the financial ramifications of having.
Well, we got financial, and then, I mean, I'm looking at it from two different views here, but.
Right, yep.
Just my personal opinion as a, as a parent, you know, of a student. And I might, I do foresee what you're saying about the, on the financial side. But if we got this information, and it is new, the first year, I mean, I think it'd be great to use as a tool to help maybe not continue having that trend where we see that. So if it comes in in the kindergarten, you know, in first grade or third grade or whatever, then we can hopefully not see it at fifth and sixth grade.
Right.
Is that the plan? Or is that really what's the timeframe?
Trying.
Is the, is the timeframe for results going to probably be the same next year?
I have no answer. I, I, we, I don't.
You have no idea?
I don't know. I mean, I'm hoping it's gonna be faster, but.
Does that obviously changes your, what you can do with this?
It was supposed to be, I think, six weeks originally, we were supposed to get the results, so.
Right.
I can't predict.
Right.
Okay, the next chart is actually the, our data compared to the state data by proficiency level, by grade, by subject area. So I'm not gonna go through every point, but if you just look at the top two bars in math and in link, English Language Arts, and these are very tiny numbers. For instance, you don't want to have a lot of kids at level one, that's the basic level. So we have fifteen point eight percent in the area of math at level one compared to the state's twenty-one percent. So a good thing that we're lower than the state was on that one. You also don't want to have, you probably want to have more kids at level two than you want at level one, but you really don't want a lot of kids at level two also. But our level two is a little higher than the state's, our, our level two at thirty-five percent in the area of math is lo, is higher than the state's thirty-one percent. So you, so you work your way across. Same scenario happens in the opposite side. When you get to the level four, I would love for all of our kids to be at level four, and definitely much higher than the state. We're a little bit lower in the area of level four students. The white box above there where it says level four, we have seventeen point four percent in the area of math at level four compared to the state's nineteen point eight. But then on the flip side, we have more kids that are at level three. So if you look at the last two columns, it lumps together the kids who are considered proficient or above. So it's a level three and four. So the state had forty-seven percent overall of the third through eighth grade students at proficiency level. We had forty-eight point nine. Then if you look in the area of English Language Arts, the state had only fifty-eight percent of the kids in grades three through eight at proficient or above, and we had sixty-six point two. And then the rest of that whole data table actually goes through every proficiency level comparison at each grade level in each subject and compares DAFIELD to the state. That's what that chart does. And I know that it's small, and I can send that to you in a bigger format.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last section is what parents actually got. Parents actually got two pages for their student in the air, one page in the area of reading, one page in the area of math. And it looked like this with a comparison to the state. You may hear sometimes people are questioning why we have a district and a school score. That's because we are the only school in the district. So our district score is a, is the school score. So this particular student got an aggregate score of twenty-five twelve, which puts that student in level three. There's a plus or minus twenty-four, and that is a score range. Again, because of the types of questions that were asked of that student on any, on, if that student were to take that same test on another day, he or she may get slightly different questions. So they may be a little bit higher or a little bit lower. And through some sort of algorithm, they come up with a number. So this student on an, on another day might have had twenty, up to twenty-four points higher or twenty-four points lower. So if they had had twenty-four points higher, that would have given them, that would have put him in the level four range. And if he had had, he or she had had twenty-four points lower, it would have put him, it would have still kept that student in the, in the level three range.
So there's basically a two percent inaccuracy in it, or two percent?
It's different from student to student.
No.
If you look at all of the students, they have, they have different, different score ranges. Again, based on the types of questions that were asked. And then the bottom part of that talks about the claim in the area of reading, language, listening and speaking, writing and research. It gives you a, a score where that legend is over on the right-hand side, where if there was a triangle with an exclamation point, that student in that area was below the standard. Or if there's just a dash, they were at the standard, or the checkmark is above the standard. So this student did well in the area of research and inquiry, so they were above the standard. And then the last page actually just breaks out that number that I just showed you, the twenty-five twelve. So it just shows you the, the score range for that student. So looking at the twenty-five twelve plus the twenty-four, we give the student a twenty-five thirty-six, which would make it a level four. Twenty-five twelve minus twelve, minus the twenty-four, we give him the twenty-four eighty-eight, which would still be a level three. So parents got this with a, a letter from the commissioner. We have some information on our, on our website. We're trying to do what we can in order to help parents understand that. And the last slide is just, you know, some information that we thought was as easy to understand as possible. And from here, Patty's gonna give you the, because I think you asked for the SAU, all the SAU data. So she's got some information and some other stuff.
Paul, is it fair to say that, you know, the Kornmore program is being utilized to help the grades three and four?
Yes.
Kornmore, was that that?
The Kornmore program and the WIN program in the younger grades, it's really, it pinpoints. It, it's teachers looking at this kind of data, STAR data, all of the data that we have on students, really looking at aggregate, they picture data, it's also looking at individual claims, tech stuff. In the area of reading and math, or in the area of, in the area of English Language Arts or math, the sub standards, it really pinpoints what kids need. That's what WIN is, what I need. So we look at, making blocks of time and really tailoring instructions specifically to those students. Weaknesses, and if they don't have a lot of weaknesses, we, we try to boost them up in areas that can make them even stronger.
So I tried not to overwhelm you with. So I tried not to overwhelm you with data, because if we picked apart every grade level for every school in the SAU, it would be overwhelming. So I simply just took proficiency levels, so kids that were at, at least a level three in grades three through eight for each town, each subject. So Paul shared with me Brian's competitive nature of wanting to know who we beat. He took, he took the scores, the averages for each section, and Chichester Math was a little bit better than yours, but you either tied or did better than every other school in the SAU on the rest of your scores.
We did better than everybody except for two ties.
Except for two, there were two ties.
We did better than everybody in the SAU except for two ties. You tied twice, you beat them everywhere else.
I wasn't going to do that, but Brian averaged everything.
But the competitive nature is not what we want.
Right.
But that's what was waiting for me.
I had to. So do you, do you find that this is a useful tool? I mean, I know this is, this is something that we are obligated to do. Is this, is this going to be useful for you?
Yes. I think overall, I think it's, I think it would even be hard for teachers to say that. I think that, you know, that they just definitely feel like there's data overload, they just feel like there's a lot of testing that goes on. But the reality is, you know, it gives a lot of information in order to be able to help kids out. The reality is a lot of teachers, like I said, you know, like I asked teachers, predict where we'll be. Who's going to get the lowest math scores in the school by grade? Who's going to get the highest ones? You know, how high will they be? That kind of stuff. The teachers know from gut, but this really pinpoints the stuff that Peter was saying, you know, like what is it specifically that we're looking at? And again, don't get, like, you know, for parents, don't, it's one point of data, you know? It's one point of data, it's one test, one, one day. You know, it was a new test, kids, some kids just don't like taking tests, so they seem to do really well, you know? Parents will say like, geez, they seem to understand what's going on on a daily basis in class, and yet they take this test and they do poorly.
Right.
You know, look at all of us, some of us were, didn't, really didn't like taking those little fill-in-the-blank, those little fill-in-the-dot tests and didn't do well, so. It's a piece of information to not.
Seems like.
Too crazy about, but.
Seems like with a six-month delay, it.
It's almost useless to that point.
It, it makes, on an individual level, it really reduces its effectiveness, but on a trend level, it gives you a picture of what is going on.
It does what it's intended to do, I think, and look at the whole school overall. Like last year, how did your school do in, in teaching the curriculum that you designed? Here are the standards, you were expected to teach them, I'll test the students and see how they did, and it shows you a picture of, of what, what happened as a result.
Question I'll ask, Mr. Verreville just left, but I would, did want to ask his question about the opportunity for parents to see the questions that their kids were given. Is that not something they can do?
It's not.
Okay.
They cannot get to that level, but they can certainly see a lot of other information. They can drill down to finding out all of these claims, you know? Not only did my child do this in the area of language arts, but I'd like to discuss, you know, how they have done in the area of reading and writing and listening and speaking.
Have you had any parents ask for that data?
No.
Well, the teachers don't even see these questions. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Right, so I mean, it's just something that's on a, done on a computer that's random, that's.
And that is different, because the NECAP, we, we did get to the point that you could actually drill down and you could actually see every child's question and how they answered. So that was helpful in, in knowing that, you know, you could am, you could decide like, oh, I know that the kid knew that question, they just either didn't understand it or they chose not to answer it correctly, but it was the same questions for everybody. So you could just look at question, you know, the computation questions in the area of math in the fourth grade. And you would, you'd look at that and say like, oh, well, of course they didn't, because they took that test in March and we didn't cover that topic until May or whatever it was.
Now, are you able to group results by individual teachers as well? Like can you look at a, you can look at a classroom?
Yes.
And see that data as well?
Yes.
I mean, after all, the comments about the smarter balance overall in terms of the community effort, but, I mean, I did get mine in the mail. I don't know if Jim, you got one?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and I didn't have any problems understanding it until you started talking about cut scores and everything else, I'm like, maybe I didn't read it right. So, I mean, I guess I color-coded it on a very simple range, but.
Well, I mean, Paul and I went back and forth about this presentation. He would send it to me, I'd say, oh, don't go that deep, oh, everybody's going to be confused.
Oh, no, no, I really appreciate this.
I'm fine with it, but I, I guess I'm more hoping that this is, is in fact used as a tool. I mean, my biggest concern is to, that we know that teachers can predict, and we're just going to keep letting them go. I mean, I'm hoping that this will, again, it's the first time I get it, but I mean, if we can nail it down individually, do those students need more help in certain areas? Do we need to have different? You know, I mean, I know we can all talk about the budgeting and everything else, but I don't know, there's too many parents out there that would sit here and be okay with going across.
Do you want to, is it, is it possible to see in the, maybe just in the targets where we're below the state average, which is a couple, but not many? Can we see actual classroom performance? Can you, can you provide that for us?
That works under.
No, I, when I say classroom, I mean a individual.
Classes.
Classes. So we can see if, we can look at, so we can see that if it's a, is it one spot? Is it one room? Or is it consistent across a grade level? And maybe that can just help to answer some questions.
I think we're dig, we're still digging into reports. To answer your question, I don't know if that's an available report, or if that's something we'd have to go in and create. We can look at that.
There is some, the SAU does have a math and literacy task force that is doing some of that work now. So they, they're act, that's their first job is to be looking at this and doing.
Is that information that you can, you can try to get for us?
I will try to get that.
Okay.
These tests were done in what, March, was it?
It, it started in March, but it went all the way through May, depending on which grade.
Now, if.
Not all grades were tested at the same time.
If, if it is winding up being a snapshot of the performance of the year of your school, would it be best, if you're starting in March, are there subjects that are just not covered by that point with this test?
Yes, in fact, that was one of the concerns that people had, because there was that window originally when the state was looking at it, that it was, you could test in this window. Well, everyone wanted to test the last week of May, because that gave them March, April, and all of May in order to be able to teach more stuff.
Right.
But the reality is, everybody can't test in May, so then they be, then it became an issue of like, so if schools test some kids in March and some in April and some in May, no one wanted to be the first one to teach in March. So the state in its wisdom did say that these grades will test in this window, so everybody, so at least it was a grade level by grade level comparison. So there wasn't a.
Why, why can't everyone test the last week of May?
I think it's.
Much data to process.
I think it just might be.
Is it just too much data?
I would think that it would be a technology issue, big time.
Oracle's got to be involved in this, definitely, you know, both of them, so.
That's disappointing on smarter balance this part. They should be able, if they're going to, if they're going to give you a windup issue.
Well, I think also school districts, availability of technology, we're very fortunate that we've been forward-thinking and.
Yeah.
Integrating technology into everyday instruction where other schools.
That was part of the delay.
Would only use the computer for testing.
There were, yeah, there were still some paper pencil.
Because people didn't have computers, they'd do pencil, paper with these.
Right, there are, there are schools up north with struggling to get internet access.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Okay. Any?
Thank you for bringing me up. At that, for the principal's report, other than to invite you to the music concerts, there is a K through three concert and a fourth through eighth grade band and chorus concert. It is next Tuesday and the following Thursday, I believe, or Thursday and Tuesday. It's on the website.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Mr. Yerza? See you then. Continuing your business, phone system.
Hello.
Hi.
I think I have a, I think I have a figure for you to put in the budget. I consulted with Ray Cooper, who is the, the man I talked to you about last, last time I was here, and he's still in the process of nailing down figures, and he's found some companies to work with that he, he believes are cheaper and, but based on the quotes that we have so far, what I did was I threw out the high and the low amount, and I averaged the remaining four bids and came, and then I added ten percent just in case, you know, like prices go up, and it came out to twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Per year?
Per year. And that's with the lease.
Okay.
And it's lease with a, a three-year lease with an option to.
Purchase.
Purchase for a dollar at the end.
Okay. And does that include maintenance, or is maintenance separate from that?
It's not such that I can, you know, since they're averaged and they're different plans, and some do and some don't, and they're all pretty close in amounts, I didn't figure that in.
Okay.
They range in amounts from twenty-two thousand to the high of twenty-seven thousand.
Okay.
But since these are not the actual quotes that we'll use when we purchase the actual systems, because it will be, what, six months, six, eight months from now before we do it, these are, these are like placeholder quotes to give us on amount.
Right.
After talking to Ray today, I think that the, that there could be, it could be less, but it will likely not be more.
But does that number also include the additional T1 line for?
Yes.
Okay.
The yearly charge of that.
Okay.
So it's not a, you know, I mean, it's not a nailed-down, exact figure that you're going to get it for, but I think it's the best estimate that we have at this point to put in the budget.
But it's everything that, that we will potentially need for the foreseeable future.
Yes, yes.
What was that dollar amount, one more time?
Twenty-seven K.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven. Okay. Twenty-seven thousand?
Yes.
For three years?
Every year for three years. I mean, it's tw, it's, it's because we, because, because you, the job you sent me on was to find a three-year lease with one, with a dollar buyout at the end of three years, it'll be twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. Then I would assume that after we buy it out for a dollar at the end of three years, that we would, you know, that it would no longer be twenty-seven thousand dollars, because we'd own the equipment, and it would be the cost of the yearly charge.
And that depends on who we wind up going with.
Yes.
Right.
And we can, when we get to the point, you know, like if, my thought is, if we budget this amount and we get that amount, and we are, we're looking in April at getting firm quotes, and we put on RFP, and, you know, we can stipulate dividing it up in that way, you know, like what would be the yearly cost after three years? What would be the, the maintenance agreement? How would that be separated out? Like all of those specifics we can put in when we get the actual bid bids.
Any further questions for the board?
Just one, Deb, that was the averages, right, from?
It's the average plus ten percent.
You did do the ten percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? That's it? Thank you, Deb.
Yep.
Fiscal year seventeen budget. Yeah, but you're right.
All right.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Deb.
More trees.
Thank you.
You have to go on a clip.
That way.
Missing one? You have one more? One more budget?
I have more budgets, yeah.
Because it was, it looks like it was Shelley, we're missing one, right?
No, we're.
Okay, never mind.
They were just stuck.
Answer.
Jessica, everybody.
User error.
So what you received is a operating budget, a food service budget, and a default budget.
Yep.
Or will.
Almost.
Once it arrives.
I have the lunch comparison, too.
I have that, too, but I would like to give you a new one, because I'm highly embarrassed that the one that was posted online was misspelled. So I went to copy them and like.
I wasn't sure, so I brought them. Yours.
Well, let's use mine, so that I can hide behind that.
Feel better.
Yes.
They were dear filed. It's probably autocorrect.
I think I do it a lot, too.
I didn't see it either.
That would have been a test.
Yeah, I'm glad I caught it first. But I, I think it probably was spelled check.
Yeah.
Doesn't always work.
Okay.
All right.
Turn one.
So what I've done is, for the operating, let's start there. I highlighted in orange the areas that were changed within the budget. So any areas in, if you keep flipping, you'll see them. There's just weren't a lot of changes, that's why. But as you flip through, you'll see, I think it starts on page.
Seven.
Seven of eight.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Seven of eight and the last page as well, so an eight of eight. Those were the only areas within the budget that I made changes per the discussion of the, with the board at the last meeting. So line two fifty-one, which is ground maintenance, we made the requested increase there for eight thousand.
That includes the grounds maintenance?
Yeah.
That we voted on?
Correct. And then for line two fifty-four, I increased the plowing to eighteen thousand, it was originally at thirteen thousand, so there was that increase there. The areas below and other support services were the fringe benefits and the increases that you approved at the last meeting, so those would have changed all those areas as well. And on the last page, eight of eight would be the food service. I put in the amount that we, we believe at this time we will need to cover if we were to pass the proposed budget, as is, which I gave you as a one-page as well. Now, I will say that, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we were really working hard with all of the food service directors, trying to reduce the deficit as much as possible. You'll notice in this one, we really weren't able to, but that's because there were some creases in some areas that were, that we didn't have the previous year, such as health insurance was the big one, not just because of the rate increase, but because we have other individuals that will be partaking in electing the benefits. We have, I don't remember if I mentioned this last time or not, but we have, one of the initiatives we're working on as a, as a whole SAU is getting all the food directors together more frequently to help put together some best practices, inventory, that type of thing, watching how much waste we're wasting, as well as participating in the New Hampshire Spires Group, which we're hoping that will save them some money on supplies and food as well. So that just started this year, a couple months ago, so we're hoping to see a little bit of savings this year on that as well.
Any questions? Going on the budget? Well, you might as well stay with the, the operating budget at this point, yes. So the, I'm reviewing what I'm going to say to the NBC.
Sure.
So the insurance, health insurance came in at the five point five still, that's doesn't, and the main drivers, oh, this does not include anything for the telephone system, does it?
Correct. It does not. Because we didn't have that, we didn't have that figure until.
Sorry.
Two minutes ago.
What's that? What's that?
We didn't have that amount until a couple of minutes ago.
But it does include a realistic view of the food service, which has been not nailed down in previous years.
Correct.
That is correct. We've asked them to, to take a look. We, we have done, what we've done for revenue is we have taken a three-year trend and really taken a look at, okay, what have we received in? How many reduced and free lunches? How many paid students? We tried to take a look at all of that to see where we were increasing, where we were decreasing, to come up with the revenue piece of it. So we really tried to look hard at that, to figure out what it was instead of just choosing a number from looking at what's happened, you know, within this budget. And then for supplies and all the other pieces, I've asked them to take a look at what they believe they will actually spend. And a current practice, and we're moving away from, and a previous practice was each year, they would pretty much look at the previous year purchase orders of how much they, they were going to spend and use those figures for the current year going in, or the next year going in. So we're really looking at zero budgeting on those and looking at what we think we're going to spend each quarter in trying to track inventory and how much we're wasting and things like that, to hopefully come closer to what we're actually going to need.
So the big one was the health insurance then?
The health insurance was the huge driver in this one.
The, um, so Amber, the, I know we got a letter from the commissioner that said we needed to start addressing the deficits in the food service programs. Do you have a sense, have you heard anything about, you know, this means in two years you need to be at a level? Or is it just
No.
work towards?
It's, I haven't heard a definitive date of when they want it done, but they want to start seeing improvement. Seeing a huge deficit in, in, in all the schools, not just this school, several have it that we're working on. It's not, it's not acceptable for them. So some of the other ways we could, you know, increase revenue is by doing extra, you know, little extra things here and there. Baking muffins, things like that. I know one other district does. But also we could look at possibly increasing the cost of lunches, which is why I passed around a copy of what the other districts are charging.
Is there a way to, to really see what, say a 25 cent increase, how that would work out into the?
Based on the number of?
Based on the, do we, do we know?
Like if we raised it 25 cents, how much would that raise?
What, what's that give us in revenue? I mean, is there a way to?
Yeah, I mean, definitely, because we could take a look at, we, we have it broken down. All, all of the students that had been actually paying for lunch, so we've got it broken out, so we would just use that cost calculation instead of the current one we have. So we should be able to do that.
Okay.
The, the, obviously the driving force is insurance. I mean, it's at a $31,000 projected deficit and the insurance is 21,000. So the, at one point, the board made the decision to keep staff at the 30 hours so that they could have insurance. So that, that's a decision that, you know, that you need to discuss if you want to maintain that level of staffing at that number of hours per week with affordable healthcare. Over 30 hours, you have to offer insurance. So, I mean, that's, that's the only area you could look at this year that would, would give you that substantial savings.
Can you explain the USDA foods line to me?
Um,
What is that?
That is revenue, that is revenue that we receive from the state to cover those, cover different foods and supplies. Is that correct, Paula?
Where are you?
No.
It's the amount of food that we get.
It's still food, not revenue.
Paid per case, 375, but we have a value
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
An actual value of the food. And it's the total cost.
It's supposed, it's supposed to balance out.
The USDA.
So between the revenue and the line?
The food that we receive and the expense, or is it, you, if you could explain it, you would know better than I do.
Okay, but I'm, I'm still not great at it.
That's okay.
Food from USDA and we pay 270, uh, 375 a case for it. But it has a value, you know, a market value of this amount of money. So when we did the PO for it, they had to say that this is how much we're getting from USDA and then offset it by whatever it is. Sorry.
So the, the USDA revenue was at?
USDA what?
The revenue line for USDA, is that that difference? Are we showing that difference in market value versus what we're paying?
I'm not exactly sure how it shows up in the lines because we also get paid from USDA for each lunch that we serve.
That's, yeah.
That's the revenue.
That's right, okay.
That's the revenue.
So the revenue proposed was 9,716 and change.
Correct.
And then we have the line item 36.
Yep.
Which was proposed 12,840.
Which is what we believe we're going to receive.
That was the question that Delisa and I were working on last week, and I'm not sure what she came up with, because I'm not sure where the 12,000 came from, because
She had a whole breakdown on that. We can share that with you.
It looks like it was based on actuals. 1415 actual was 12,000, 228.
But she did a, but she did a trend.
Okay.
So it could be just the way the trend ended up being.
Yeah, but if you look at the actuals, then it was a
It would have been close, yeah.
I mean, in 2013, 14, it was 4,000. And then 1415, it went to 12,000.
Well, one of the things that we did was when, when it was a huge difference, we dropped out 2013 and 14 because it threw it way off balance. And we didn't want to estimate low on the low end and then realize we didn't have enough in there to cover it.
So, the food service revenue, if, if, if the price went up on an individual lunch, does that also increase our USDA revenue? Does it have an impact on that, or that's?
That's a flat rate per plate essentially?
Okay. It's not proportion.
So we would see that in line 11. So if we increase the cost, we would see it in line 11.
Is that USDA revenue, was that for every paid meal that we serve, or is that for every meal? Period?
No, I don't, I don't believe it's every meal. Um, I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't want to give you an incorrect answer.
Did we get asked that on the NBC?
So I will find that out for you.
Do you, do you know the estimated, I mean, I could probably just divide, but the estimated, the 82,474 on line 11 that we're, we're coming in, is that based on lunches, or is that based, that's based on everything? Breakfast, lunch?
That's based on everything.
Snack, machine, all of it? All right.
Every type of revenue source that we would generate through any meal or vending machine, or milk, whatever may be, would end up in that line.
So closing the, the difference by, say, going, going to a different rate for lunch in terms of the deficit, we, we can't calculate that today? We don't have that information?
I was, I was playing with a calculator.
Yeah.
And if you assume every dollar of that 82,000 was a $2.25 lunch, which it isn't, but if you assume everyone is, you're only generating about $9,000 if you assume every one of those is a $2.25 lunch.
Right, and we're gonna, because we've got reduced in there.
Right, right. So, so I just, I just took that number, divided by two and a quarter, got a figure.
Can we ask Paula if she knows how many lunches she serves? Do you know that number?
Well, it's about 150 to 200 a day.
So that helps.
It's 180 days.
Thank you.
That's a lot.
What's that? It's 27,000 times?
25 cents.
Be 45, 100. 100. So it has an impact, but it most certainly doesn't, doesn't fill the hole at all.
The other thing to consider too is when you raise the lunch, then sometimes you have some drop off in participation.
Where did we raise it last year?
Most everybody was at 250.
Yeah, mostly, except for one other.
The reason for the closer examination of the food service budget was an initiative from the state?
Um, I mean, they want to see the deficit decrease, but it was initiative for me because at the end of the day, it's a bottom line in the operating budget if we don't take care of it. And so I needed to take a look at what we were budgeting, why we were budgeting that way. And that's why I've asked the food directors to be part of that process, because they are there in the caf, serving lunches, purchasing. I'm, I'm not. So for me to make a decision that they should spend $5,000 on supplies or $50,000 on food isn't reasonable because I'm not in the kitchen, I don't know what they need. So, yes, the overhead, they're looking to decrease the deficit, but I really feel like it was as a SAU as well, taking a look at that to see why we're running in such a deficit and how we can fix it.
Have we, I guess, that's probably a better question for you, Paula. Is there a lot of waste? I mean, at the end of every day, it was throwing away a, a value of food?
I don't have a value of food in, you could talk about in, there's not a whole lot of waste in the trash barrel outside. There's a lot of waste, but that's a whole other.
That's, but that has theoretically been sold in my mind, so that is different, but.
You don't want to sit there and say?
We did get asked that last year. I remember getting asked that question at the NBC meeting.
The only, the only variable that could have is, is, is it being thrown away because the portions are bigger than necessary and therefore you're giving excess inventory? You're, you're giving food that isn't being consumed on a regular basis.
I believe portion sizes are already designated, aren't they?
That's predefined.
They're, yeah, they're defined on what to be.
They have to take a fruit or a vegetable and they don't necessarily want it.
So are we, I know, I know we can't stop it, but are we throwing away $15,000, or are the students throwing away $15,000 with the fruit a year, or in vegetables, or? But in the kitchen, as far as
I don't think there's a way to
As far as prepared food in the kitchen goes, that's fairly, that's an efficient, as far as we consume what we produce.
Yes. So who exactly was it, was it, um, who from the state was focusing on the deficit, wanting to bring it down?
The food commissioner.
Pardon me?
The commissioner?
There's a commissioner of food?
Food commissioner.
And we got a letter from the commissioner of education as well.
Ooh.
Well, maybe that's what it is.
The commissioner of education and the?
And I know when I've gone to the, when I've gone to the conferences, oh, I don't know, I don't know if that's their title. But when I've gone to the food conferences, they've talked about, eh, in general, that being an issue statewide that they're looking at because of Department of Ag.
Is this the Department of Ag or something? A food commissioner? I can say food commissioner.
There's no, it's, it's not, it's the commissioner of education.
Let me, let me put quotes around it.
I want to hear more about these food meetings.
There's no, no big food supplied. Just talking about it.
So, so based on this, this run-through of the, of the food service budget, this feels more realistic to you? I mean, we're
It does.
Running a deficit, but we've run a deficit for years.
Yeah, we, we haven't really done a lot with this budget. It's, I mean, I think Amber's, an initiative of Amber's, you should be seeing this. This is part of your bottom line.
Right.
And this was never developed and brought forward to the board for consideration. You have some decision-making in this budget.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the main purpose, is like I said, at the end of, at the end of the day, it hits your bottom line, so I think you should see what's making up that 31,000. So that's why I broke it out, so that you could see it.
If, let me ask a question. If we raise the prices, are we all going to be burned in effigy, or are we, I mean, what's?
Well, technically, we're supposed to be bringing our prices up to meet what a free lunch is, and I'm not sure exactly what that is now, but it's closer to $3. And so, and we're paying two and a quarter, and the state gives us like 23 or 27 cents on top of that, which means we're short. But I get more money for the free kids than I do for the paying kids.
So
And we're supposed to be bringing it up, but because we're an SAU, it's weird how they do all the numbers, but somebody in the SAU is closer to that $3 figure, so.
It's kind of average throughout the five districts.
They're all 250, yeah.
So, by the way, if you're there, Paula, my ace in the hole in the discussion is to say, you mean when Paula ran a restaurant behind this wall here? We'll have everybody in the old, all, the old timers will love that.
If you, if you start baking again, you're going to have, the, the general public will swing by.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on.
Going through this budget, I was just, and I've done it before, but I want to go again, is the, the high, the, the big hits is what the NBC's going to look at? I'm going to highlight the savings. And the first one is the high school tuition.
Well, do we want to finish off with the, with the food services?
Oh, sorry.
So, so.
Okay.
Are we, are we okay with the food service as is?
Did, did we propose, we proposed a raise in
It was discussion.
There was a, so we did not change the cost of lunches for next year?
Not aware that we changed.
I have not. I, I didn't think I could do that.
So we're still working off of, of 220?
220, it's 225.
To help
For this year, right.
To help close the gap, is this an appropriate time to
This is when you do it.
Adjust the cost for next year?
No, this is, this, because we are talking budget, now's the time to do it.
So.
You just did something, what, is it really going to close the gap?
He's, based on
A quarter, a quarter increase would give, would reduce the deficit about $4,500, about $4,000.
Based on 160?
150 to 200 students.
So, so I would, I would propose that we raise the cost of a lunch for the next school year to 250.
To 250? Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. No choice in seconds. Any discussion?
What do you think, Paula?
You want to know how many people buy a lunch?
Are you baking again?
170 seconds.
I'll be there.
I want the cinnamon rolls.
Does that?
It's the Danish's.
Is that in line with where the rest of the SAU is?
Well, it's
You have that right here.
Chart, so.
So everybody other than a couple other rules.
Hence where Zach came up with the number.
I All right, all right.
I can read. Okay, any discussion? All's in favor of the motion of raising the, the price of meals up to 250? Say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Thank you.
Just cost myself some money. My kid's brown bag it every day.
So I'm sorry, you might have gone over, line 21 on the health, that's health insurance, school lunch?
Health ins-, what's that? Health insurance, yeah.
Okay.
There's going to be, there's going to be somebody new on insurance.
Right.
If we didn't get that through the budget, we'd have to consider
And then
them down.
That, that change that we just made, we should see, again, extremely rough estimating, but that should bring the food service revenues up to about, what do we, it's 80?
153.
83 and, about 87,000 approximately.
Okay. I can get you exact numbers tomorrow. I can, we can, I can put it in Sky.
This is what we did to keep
I'm comfortable with leaving it at that.
Yes.
I know about the rest of the board?
What's that?
Comfortable with leaving food services at that?
I don't know where else to find money, so.
Okay, so we also with food service?
Yep.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you. You can stay and
It's so much fun.
Just making a blanket.
Okay, so if we're also with food service, let's do with, let's go to the regular budget.
So, um, the high school, and I get, now I've snarled up before because we get back to 300,000. But this, the $45,000 increase is because Concord did raise their tuition to a certain amount?
Yeah, it was estimated on a, I believe.
It really, it's not clear from that. I know it'll come up.
It wasn't what was it?
Was that, was that given to us, the change in contract?
It's 5% estimate, what was that?
I'm sorry. I know it says here, change in contract of the high school tuition, but did, were we ever given that? I remember seeing it, but what was, was there 5%?
It's 5%, yep. 5% increase.
That's what you're carrying, or is that actual?
That's your estimate. It's not the actual number, correct? Did we get the actual number from Concord?
They waited a long time to give it to us.
I don't think so.
That, that's the estimate I was received from Catherine.
I'm not sure if they've given us the exact number yet.
I don't, yeah, I don't think I don't, yeah, I don't think they do this early.
It's usually, it usually gets tight.
Yes.
Timeless.
Timeless. I did ask this morning if there were any changes or update to this number, and I was told there was not. So my guess is we have not received that yet.
I will also add that we have not received the performance report from Concord High School.
There's a meeting tomorrow and Ms. Gersha, the assistant superintendent, is going to be reminding them of that.
Okay.
Um, before we get off the high school thing, have we thought about possibly changing into, into that and trying to get more involved with that?
Changing into what?
The high school in Concord?
What do you mean?
As far as the school board goes, we, we were asked some questions on that during, of March last year, some of the committee was asking. I mean, as our school board, we kind of stop at grade eight, so.
As far as going, more.
It's communications, to find out, you know.
As, as, as part of the contract, we can go, you know, obviously we can go and, and visit their meetings. Uh, but being part of the, uh, voting, a member.
No, not the vote, just more so to get understanding what's happening, so.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, there's nothing, as, as far as the contract, we, we can.
I have no idea what happens at Concord High School. It's a different SAU, so. Oh, they have, is this something they raise every year?
We have a contract. It's based on, on a couple of different things.
It's be, based on the cost of, the cost of education?
Okay.
So what's the explanation for the forty-five thousand?
We had an increase in students.
Because last year, it was a hundred and ninety-two high school students. This year, it's a hundred and eighty-seven.
Well, but that figure in, is, includes Co-Brown, Central and Bow as well. So it's not just Concord?
Because last year, Co-Brown was eleven students at fourteen.
Right, and there's eleven students at fifteen now.
So that's, that's about eleven thousand, more.
And then we have one at Central. Did you have Central last year?
No.
And we have one at Bow, one at Bow.
One was there last year.
One was there last year.
Well, the thing is that the five, five percent from Concord.
Right.
You know, basically, the, the combination between Co-Brown and Concord increases, tuition increases should be the forty-five.
Because there's, there were a hundred and eighty budgeted for Co, for Concord last year. This year, there are a hundred and seventy-three. And, uh, I just did a five percent increase, that'd be around a hundred thousand. So, and, and it's good that it's less than that.
And less students.
Trying to figure out what's going on.
Didn't you say there were a hundred and ninety something?
There were a hundred and eighty last year.
Right, you pulled seven students.
So there'll be seven students, seven times fourteen would be, that'd be eighty thousand, ninety thousand almost.
But then, that's.
So in other words, it'd be helpful to have a breakdown of what the forty-five actually was from.
What, what, what's causing the increase?
Yeah.
So a comparison from last year to this year or next year?
Well, yeah, because it's, forty-five thousand is from, is increased from.
Oh, I see.
Two thirty to two, three seventy-five, excuse me, three, two, two million, three hundred thirty to two million, three hundred seventy-five. That's where the forty-five comes from. So where, what is the breakdown of the two million, three hundred seventy-five, nine hundred and forty on line twenty? And I know eleven thousand of it is from Co-Brown. Okay, so Co, if you take that.
You take eleven students at four thousand dollars per for Co-Brown.
Pardon me?
Eleven students at four thousand dollars per for Co-Brown, because it went from eleven to fifteen, right?
No, Co went, Co went from fourteen to fifteen.
Fourteen to fifteen, so a thousand.
I'm looking at the fourteen fifteen, there were eleven at Co-Brown.
It's, it's the percentage increase in Concord.
Plus Central's an extra two.
So they went up for all of them, five percent.
Okay, so I did five percent of twelve million or two million, and I got a hundred and nine thousand.
But you have less students.
So.
You have less students.
You don't want to do five percent on the two million, you want to do five percent on what Concord was last year.
So, so that's what I'm saying.
Five percent in the individual, individual schools, not, not the total.
Yeah, we're just five percent of Concord, correct? So, Co-Brown and Central and Bow are all accurate?
So what was, what was Concord's number last year?
Eleven, seven, eleven, four.
Well, see, that's trouble because it's, it was based on a fourteen thousand dollar tuition. We negotiated that to twelve thousand, so we get the three hundred back, three hundred thousand back, which we gave back to the town. I can't make a big deal about it, reduce the taxes by a dollar, which is good. But then, but still, it begs the question, where's the forty-five precisely? Forty-five thousand, what does it mean?
Well, we wound, we wound up, it was like twelve, one, I think, last year. I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, per Concord?
Last year's.
It was twelve thousand, twenty-two dollars and forty cents.
So twelve, basically twelve even. So it's like a five hundred dollar.
Six hundred dollar increase.
So last year, it was, the Concord tuition was twelve thousand, twenty-three.
Twelve thousand, twenty-three.
Twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Zero, two, three.
Mm-hmm.
Per student. So this year, it's six, two, three. So that's six, two, three, that's a six hundred dollar increase. Six hundred times one seventy-three. Times six hundred. It's a hundred and three thousand.
I think you're wrong.
Six hundred.
Do you want me to have Kathy Seffin do a side-by-side grid of last year versus this year?
Yes, please.
It's going to come up, I know. Where, why are we?
But Kathy, Kathy will come up with the numbers first.
Okay. Um, so the other main drivers are the special placements tuition, line eighty-six.
Yep.
The, um.
The, um, and I can tell you, as of a conversation that I had with Deb, um, just a couple of hours ago, um, there may be an increase in the special education budget in the contracted services line. Unfortunately, it's, the, there's a meeting coming up that's not happening for a couple of weeks. I can't, I can't give you a lot of information other than there may be an increase, yeah. I'm, I'm hoping twenty-five thousand-ish, um, but I, we just don't have the information. But I wanted to let you know that there's probably an additional service that we need to figure in.
Will we get it?
It will just, it'll just be there.
It might be, it might miss the first NBC meeting. You can, you know, if you want to put it in and then take it out, or if you want to leave it out and add it in when we know how much it is, that's, you know, however you want us to prepare that.
Well, unfortunately, our budget is, is, it's a, a work in progress.
Yeah.
You change all the way up to the, to the recession.
I'd rather wait.
Till we know.
Till we know.
Yeah.
Okay.
So jumping to page seven of eight, together, line two fifty-four, so you get the twenty-four thousand, but that's because of plowing, which we.
Jumped up.
I can understand that. I mean, I can, and I'm just picking out the big increases.
Grounds maintenance.
Transportation, um.
Is that the number, is that the number from Chris? Five thou, a five thousand dollar increase?
That's, should be based on our contract.
That's based on our contract.
A five-year contract.
That's a deal contract.
Yep.
Correct.
And then, um, you notice I'm only focusing on the pluses and the savings I can, they'll have no trouble with. Uh, FICA and health insurance are the other main drivers.
Um, do you expect the special ed transportation to also increase based on?
No, I believe it, it would just be the contracted services line.
Okay.
So that explains the two point oh seven percent increase to two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, basically. That's up from last year. We've held the line on.
It's not bad considering we've been.
Health insurance.
Yeah.
And so.
The, um, teacher contract's not in here.
Teacher contract is not in here. That'll be a separate issue, warrant article.
Separate warrant article, yes. Um, do we want to, um, at this point, do we want to put the twenty-seven thousand in for the telephone, for the telephone system?
I think you need to, because the school's closed.
Right, no, I just.
So I make a motion that we increase the, what line is that? Where is it now?
It's on two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-eight?
I believe it's two thirty-eight.
Is that the right one, Amber?
I could be wrong.
You moved it.
Amber?
Two thirty-eight.
No, I believe.
No, it'll be equipment.
That should be under communications, I believe. We moved it, didn't we?
Yep.
So, I'm not sure.
So two nineteen?
All right, I move that we.
Move from, okay, yes.
Uh, increase.
Where is it?
No, that's, that's not.
We moved the internet out of telephone, yeah.
But would it go in, is that the rate that we pay for phone services? Would you, would it be an equipment cost?
The telephone is, oh, I.
Wouldn't it be equipment?
It's a bundle. It's, it's service and equipment.
Yeah, so we're.
Would that be two thirteen?
We're going to have to split it up.
On a lease?
Well, there's a service piece, um.
Maintenance lease for.
I have to take a look at what other lines you have we could possibly put it in. Um, because I don't know that we have.
Could we put it like in the two sixteen? Because that's the on-call now, and that's more like the computer.
No.
Taken away.
No, that's.
By Trish.
That's different.
I think it's either the telephone line or like an equipment line.
Well, two thirteen is equipment, maintenance agreements.
We're buying phone equipment, but then they're providing a service piece too.
Right.
So, the service piece wouldn't go under the equipment, that's why.
Right.
Either we split it up or we find another line that's more.
What's the communications line now?
Um, internet.
And we were talking about having a T-one.
Right.
Yeah, but that's a minor, it's a minor part of it.
So we have to put the twenty-seven thousand plus the fifteen.
Should we put it in now and then move it if we have to at our next meeting?
I think you can just add the amount and Amber can find the appropriate line to put it in.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to just stuff it somewhere. We're trying to avoid putting it in lines they don't belong in.
So I move that we add twenty-seven thousand dollars to the budget for estimated lease costs for a telephone service.
Move a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Thank you.
And you'll, you'll highlight that in the orange highlight.
I will, yeah, sure.
Okay, Mr. Mann, more stuff on the budget. You are, you all set?
Um, I was going to ask about the default budget. Thank you very much for bringing that in.
I knew that.
And could I, could I ask about the regular budget before you?
Yes, huh, huh.
This will be, uh, I'm sorry, this will be presented.
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth now. Is that okay with?
Well.
They're receiving it Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
But it won't be discussed.
We're not discussing until the seventeenth, that's correct, yes.
Um, under, um, just the after-school program, we had it last year, we budgeted for five thousand dollars. Is it in here?
Yeah.
It is? Okay. That's my question.
Do you, do you want to make some decisions on the, what you want to put into the existing trusts tonight, so we can put that in?
Do we want to increase the existing trusts? Or do we want to keep them as they are? Uh, because in our next meeting, we're going to be reducing the, um, the, the, um, paving.
Right, it's going to be down to nothing left.
Right.
So if you wanted to start putting money in towards phase three from surplus, you'll need to put that in a warrant article.
Technically, we have until the second Tuesday, second Tuesday in Ju, uh, January to, to come up with warrant articles for the NBC.
So that's the encumbered money that we kept, right? Patty? That's the encumbered money that, oh, no, oh, no.
This would be.
That'd be excess for this year.
Right.
This, this would be future surplus.
Be transferred at the end of this, if you had.
If we had excess, yeah.
If we had a surplus, it goes in?
If we have a surplus.
If, if we have, if we have surplus money, we can, we can decide, you know, we want to put, say, up to twenty-five thousand dollars into, uh, you know, a, a ZAC, a ZAC fund and, and have the surplus in the end of the year, we do it.
Yeah.
We don't, doesn't happen.
Facilities repair trust, you have the technology trust, you have a special ed trust. So we typically look at the balances in those and then, like Kevin said, make the decision on whether you want to fund them any further with surplus funds.
Something we want to think about. Obviously, we can't, well, we should, we could tonight.
You want to give it to everybody?
Yeah, thank you. Amber's got the balances in the trusts.
She is great.
She is good. She's the best.
I know, I know, I know the reason we.
You done with the budget?
No.
That's part of the stuff with that.
You're not doing the budget yet.
Um.
So you will be there, will you be there the, um.
Seventeenth.
Will the SAU be there, um?
The seventeenth.
Not the, um.
Second.
No, they just, they just receive it on the eighth.
Basically, just.
And I, they'll go through it quickly and I'll make up a list of questions and forward them to you all.
Okay.
That's the best.
I remember that's the way it worked in the past.
Yes, it's the best thing for it.
December seventeenth?
They'll be weeping and gnashing their teeth.
Yeah, it was changed.
Timbuk is.
Nope, they're not going on, because Timbuk's changed. Every day, changes change.
It's, it's, it's kind of a shell game.
As of, as of ten o'clock last night, it changed again.
Oh, geez. Okay, well, that works for us.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we have a listing of the expendable trust where the balances are. And for us to, uh, to look at and decide what we want to, if we want to put any additional monies, um, any sur, additional surpluses into the budget for next year in the warrant articles.
Yes, because it hasn't been paid yet.
Correct.
That's why there's money in the, there's not a, there is not really twenty-nine thousand dollars in the paving, as we all know.
Next meeting will be. Having the public hearing for that.
We'll take care of that at the next meeting.
What was that, I'm sorry?
The public hearing at the next meeting will diminish the paving trust, so that will be, you know, we'll leave a little bit in there. And then, when you go to, to start phase three, you'll need to start putting money in there.
What was the estimate for phase three? The real estimate?
Seventy-six thousand, I think.
Okay, let's, let's get that number from. Thanks, uh, and. Yeah, technology has twenty grand in it.
And that was, I think, replace and repair of.
Right.
Right.
A hundred and eighty-two.
Replace and repair, is that what you said? Didn't they have a line item in there about that?
That's the title of the trust. So if you fund that trust, it can only be used to replace and repair technology. It's not.
System, technology?
If what?
Of the phone systems, technology.
Not really, well.
Can we take, could we use the telephone?
Technically, that's an argument.
It would be gone in one year.
Yeah. To start.
I don't know. I think it would be up to the trustee to approve or not, whether it fits the criteria.
I don't think, I don't think it would fall into the criteria.
Maybe not.
Yeah, we do.
Didn't Ellen suggest we not do, take a, take a vacation on the playground trust?
I believe that's also.
It wasn't.
Next year, we'll look at it again.
Yep.
Just to keep up with the maintenance on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put in a little bit.
So facilities repair, we.
Consistently move money into it.
Anything, any looming time bombs in the building that?
I think, I mean, the, you saw the, the heating system, you know, one issue with that, and it's pretty costly.
The intake.
Things are getting.
The exhaust in the gym is not working.
Aging. Whenever you get into the HVAC stuff, as you know. Costly.
Can you, um, I guess Mr. Davis would look into the, the exhausting intake of the gymnasium as far as the, uh, Mr. Ujra, thank you.
We could probably ask, um, Honeywell to come and take a look. And see if they have any proposals for, you know, they could look at the HVAC system and the heating system and.
It's been such, it's been an issue for a while, just to.
Let us know if we should be planning for anything.
Probably should do that.
Do we need to motion that in? Because I think that needs to be done.
They did correct that when they did the work. That was all part of the whole.
They balance the, uh, the library up at all, or?
Well, library in the gym is hard to balance.
Right, but they did, they did a lot of work in the gym with the ventilation, you know, restarting the blower and stuff like that.
Recently, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
Like, well, yeah, recently, when they redid the whole heating system.
Oh, I thought you meant like they were just in there like the last couple of months because there is a problem.
No. Although we could start renting out saunas.
Okay, so that's something we wanna look at as far as come up with a game plan, uh, look at, see if we have any additional monies to go into, um, the trust from the surplus.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, we have till, it's a bit of a jadword to decide exact numbers or how we wanna do it.
And these are Obi warrant articles?
Yes.
Do we have the proposed draft warrant articles yet, or would that be?
No, that's, that would come when we make the decisions on how much to put into each trust. Those would, that would go into the articles too. And when we need the bottom line of the budget, which we're not, not there yet.
If we do decide to do anything with the, the paving, um, just, uh, the, when that initially was set up, there was a, a motion that the parking lot be paved with permeable pavement. So I, I think that any quote that we work with to base encumbrances off of should be off of something with, with that type of material.
From a, I've looked, I've looked into that from a cost standpoint.
It's very expensive.
It's about fifty percent more expensive. The other concerns are the base underneath it would need to be torn up, re-engineered, so you have a, a, a much greater expense with that. It's not proven in northern climates yet.
No, I, I, it just was, it was, um, a motion made and approved at the town meeting.
Right.
Well, also part of the same motion was that we were supposed to, um, can, um, work with the conservation commission.
Correct.
Does it have the fund?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think if you, if you put money into the trust for the phase three, the phase three is probably not gonna be ready for July unless you got a committee together. You could start putting money in there for it.
It's gonna double up.
Just, just thinking about what the costs realistically would be.
Right.
I realistically see phase three probably two, two years down the road.
Yeah.
Least?
Yes. At least you can start working on it.
Hmm.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on the budget?
Logistics of getting the paperwork, the documents. Do I pick them up at the school on eight, um, next Wednesday and then deliver them to them?
We might be able to get them to the school for you. Um, probably depends on when Amber and Kathy have everything done and put together, um.
Cause there'll be the additional twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand.
Because you need, you need, well, the bu- the budget should be finalized prior to Tu- Tuesday the eighth.
Cause you got the, you got the meeting on Tuesday.
Tuesday the eighth is when it's given.
I meant, I meant, did I say Wednesday? I meant Tuesday the eighth.
I'm saying it's a di- it's after that.
I'm sorry, Tuesday the eighth. I'm looking at Tuesday.
You'll arrive empty-handed.
So yes, I, I need them to, or somehow they have to get to the meeting.
Um, do you want to see? Do you want us to email you when they're ready and then make, and make a plan?
You could, I'd like you to email them, yes, and then I print them out or something?
Oh, no, we can, I'll email you when they're ready so that we can decide how they get to you.
Oh, oh, yeah. Good, okay, thank you.
Are we on a contract for the oil for this year?
Yes.
Yep.
For this current year, we, we went off of, for the rate that we put in here, we went off of what we have this year.
Okay. But, yeah, because that's, that's the following year.
Yeah, I know, you know, guessing.
Yeah, I think I did a slight increase.
That's the problem with the school budget, we're so far ahead. Anything else on the budget? During this, thank you.
Thanks, Amber.
I think you, uh, I think you heard our additions.
Yeah.
Congratulations, changes.
Not too bad.
No.
Trust me.
Okay, policies.
Yes, the, um, they were not discussed at the last meeting, so we didn't advance them a re- um, a reading. So we're on the second reading for the purchasing and bidding policies. Um, if you want to work on them for the next meeting, I'll need to get some language suggestions unless you all love the samples and want to adopt them as is. Otherwise, please get me any suggestions ahead of time and I'll, um.
Do you have a chance to look at those?
Uh, briefly, but I've been buried, so.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, and you don't have to vote on them next time if they're not ready. We can move them to the next meeting, that's fine. Um, the video and audio surveillance policy, you just, you need to make a decision on what route you want to go with that because there's, the school board's policy, what they did was took the audio surveillance policy that they had in existence and they just added a blurb to the second paragraph that says, when you do video recording in the classroom, you need parent permission.
Yes.
Chi Chester went the route of having the attorney draft a policy that was much, it's, it's its own policy just for recording in the classroom and I had included that for you to look at. It was like two pages, it was very specific about who owns the video. A whole process and procedure for videotaping in the classroom. So you can take the, you know, the, keep it simple route or you can have a whole separate policy just for the recording part, so you should look those over and, um.
So, what you're saying, there actually would be two policies, one for the audio, one for the recording.
Right.
Is, um, and as we stand now, is any recording going on, or?
Oh, all the time.
All the time.
Yeah, we, and we've ne- we've never had, we talked about that today, we've never had a problem. Um, typically, we've used, we will need to add something to the permission slip, but we always do the, you know, do you give permission for your child to be photographed and use those photographs? So we've always said, well, if that's the case, then we, the videotape is probably a similar tool. This kinda takes it up to a new level. We'll need to make it a specific permission.
I glanced over both of them.
Mm-hmm.
And the Chi Chester policy seems a little more difficult to adhere to, I think is the best way to put it. I think simpler is better in that regard.
You can certainly go with the simpler version and if things come up or there's a concern, you can revisit a more comprehensive policy.
So the board wanted to look at it a little further and then decide in the next meeting as far as which direction we wanna go.
You're talking about the video, audio side?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I think the Chi Chester one is a little, rather go the simpler route and if we need to revise it or put it into, into it, it's the safer route. Cause we do have stuff in place.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's what we heard today. I think it's, it's, it's okay.
Cause we wanna vote on the, uh, go, vote on the, um.
E E A A?
Yeah.
I would.
Through the motion.
I move we accept E E A A as written.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, the paragraph where it talks about school board approval following a public hearing, are we gonna have to have a public hearing for each?
No, one public hearing.
For everything?
People could give input into the draft policy, which we didn't get any input.
Which we already had.
Right.
Now you're free to adopt the policy. You've had the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
So any further discussion? I mean, any, okay, all is in favor of E E A A? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Um, the use of social networking.
The social media, yeah, the social media policies, there's several of them on there. Um, Deb has put them in as a Google Doc so that staff can put comments in right next to the policy and they can sort of have a conversation. She would like to wrap those up and sort of incorporate the comments into the document and then come with some proposed language. So we're close to being finished, if you don't mind.
Table, Amber.
Waiting for another meeting on that.
It works.
Okay. The surveys, um, I simply gave you the sample policy, um, that met the requirements of the new legislation. So if you.
And that, that's a requirement now, right?
It is a required by law policy, yes. The language is not required, it's the suggested language from the School Boards Association.
So ten days prior notice.
Yeah.
Non-academic or non-educational surveys are going to students. What would constitute a non-academic or non-educational survey? Like where do you wanna go on the school trip, or?
I don't know that we give any non-academic or educational surveys. I mean, I think all of our surveys have to do with academics and education.
I think it's just a cover in case one comes up.
Yeah, I think, you know, that, right, to make parents aware that if you're planning on asking any questions that don't have to do with school, they want to know in advance and be able to opt out of that.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't see anything wrong with this one. I read this one earlier.
Move it.
I move that we adopt the non-educational questionnaire, survey and research policy as written.
I'll D A. We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing then, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The, as I mentioned, um, the J C A change in school assignment is the policy that you've actually created w- um, to deal with the, um, people that are interested in changing their assignment to high school. We came up with the application, the deadlines. The, um, legislation changed that, that now requires a school board vote. So when I get my recommendations from Paul, which I have received, it states that I have until February twenty-eighth to make my decision. So prior to that date, I will bring you my recommendation and it will require a board vote. So I can't be the final decision maker according to the new legislation.
Really?
It's back to us.
So on your.
Burned an effigy.
Your choice, you come back here and we have to approve it?
Yeah.
The policy?
The policy.
Yes, we'll have to update, yes, have that.
Will there be drastic changes, do you think?
No, I, I'm just gonna add that the board votes on my final recommendation. It'll be as simple as that.
Will you bring every request to us or just the ones that you're gonna recommend and move forward? Ooh, loaded question.
Good question.
It's the second good question I've gotten tonight.
It's like cafe coffee.
I, we can certainly discuss that. My, my thought process was I would only bring you
what's been.
what I'm recommending. Like I'm recommending this reassignment and in order to carry that out, I need you to approve it.
I would, I would like to see the ones that you aren't recommending, just as a, I didn't recommend these.
Informational, you mean?
Yeah, as an informational.
Do we want that information?
I don't think we want that.
No.
Um, would it be better?
Not compared to where we were this time last year, no.
If one is interested, one could perhaps talk to the principal or something.
I'd say nay.
I don't know.
No way.
I don't.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Think about that.
Hold on.
I was sitting here one time, a year ago. I'm all set. No.
I was, I was sitting out there.
No, we're talking at the school and it got really ugly.
Okay. Moving on.
I think the, oh, the, um, I was asked to put the use of facilities policy, um, on the agenda, so I did. And if you've not seen, had any reason to change the language, I will put it on again or not.
Was that just for reference for the travel basketball?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's okay to come off?
Bless you.
Yeah.
Happy with it as is?
I do have a question on that, that's why I put it in there.
Okay.
We had talked with the, um, fees. Where do they go? I mean, this is, I actually brought this up before the travel thing came into play, but. We had talked about this before the whole travel came into play and I think that there's some pretty big loopholes, pretty bad inside there, but are we going to be moving, cause we don't wanna see the revenue, but are we gonna be moving forward to put that into a fund?
They come to the S A U as revenue, right?
So I mean, could it, could it be in fact, go into like the focus of the P T O fund? I mean, if this is gonna keep up, we're gonna, we're gonna be continuing paying for other travel stuff too. Can we put the monies back in to another account towards, you know, like the P T O?
It's the unanticipated revenue against the bottom line.
So it still comes back, but it's not being collected.
If we have, we, I don't think we've had groups that were under that category, have we?
There's so few and far between.
I think it's something to be considered if it continues growing at the fee, it might be growing. Cause we have volleyball that's coming into play. You know, they've gotten better, they've talked about competing. We're gonna have, there's been talks about an indoor soccer possibly for next year. Was volleyball? Well, gymnastics. Has all been brought to attention. So. Might be something we need to look at for next year.
Mm-hmm. We would have to, we would have to create a, a fund, or the voters would have to create a fund.
Yeah, well, I think we'd have to take a look at the policy as a whole. You know, I think we should be able to do, you know.
It becomes, it becomes difficult for Cindy, I think, to manage. And if, you know, if the gym is, if you have a bunch of different teams and it's completely booked and then school staff come to her and say, we wanna do a play or we wanna, you know, whatever, there's no gym time left.
Right, well, you got that factoring into place, but then we got the fact that if it's gonna be nickel and dime throughout the whole year. What are we paying for the overhead that we, we're having to pay for because these fees have all been waived?
So if there's a custodian on staff or.
Our supply in already, so I'm just making, can we put the monies into an account, you know, and give a reduced rate for bigger leagues or something like that in the future? I mean, obviously not right now. This, this, Jim wasn't here that day, but this was brought up prior to this whole travel thing occurring. Cause I saw this happen. You know, and I don't know, and I think I brought it to your attention, like, oh, this is gonna, this is gonna be an issue. Cause in September, we were having a problem on the other end, right? So that's why that was brought up.
It could increase your bottom line, right, if it's being constantly used and there's a custodian on staff and the lights are always on and the, yep.
So you wanna leave it on there and think about it?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do right now to change it, cause it would affect anything that happened here tonight, cause this was kinda brought up and then we had to push it and the travel thing came in. And it's, by any means, I'm not gonna ripple the feathers, but I think it has to be something that we have to take a look at.
If you start getting multiples plus, yeah, it has a bigger effect.
You know, and I do understand that the, um, the gym is being used a lot more by the school. You know, with the volleyball and gymnastics and everything else, which is, I think it's great to take it off, but.
One thing we didn't define in it was in our little matrix, kind of a timeline. I don't think is in there, like if, if.
Timeline for what?
Well, like, say the school comes and, like you were saying, things get booked up and, and then the school can't find space.
Yeah.
There, there, there's gotta be a, a, a timeline.
You can't book it out more than.
You can't book it out more than two weeks or something in advance because the school's gotta be able to say, yeah, no, you can't book March now, sorry.
Book it for the rest of the year and leave no room.
That was asked out of one of the gentleman that was here earlier, that was asked originally. And that's what kinda was started the whole ball rolling, because they can't just book it out like now. We, we need to have the gym in February, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays for three hours for both teams. We have certain things that happen that will change around the school. So it's gonna be very difficult. And Jim and I have talked about this in the past. I mean, we have Cindy who gets, you know, paid on the stipend. And then we have the Google Docs, then we got Sakai. And it's, they're trying to juggle that through how many calendars, Paul, that, you know, we're trying to articulate on a changing ways, never mind having one person in there. So I don't know if it's something that this is gonna keep going, we have to maybe look at help in an office area trying to get a, a calendar that's.
Right.
Cause this is, this is gonna only grow. Cause this is, this is gonna only grow.
Or create some sort of definition, but you know, you can't, how far out you can book.
I mean, it's gonna open up a whole can of worms, and we just need, we need to do, you know, help, help them with. Not having an office function.
Right.
Once upon a time, it's been, since the building opened, it's been a, it's been a search for the perfect solution. Well, I mean, that brings defeat, I mean, if you have somebody in the office, do we have somebody in the office, we only have one part-timer, right? I mean, I'm not gonna look at that direction, she's got five thousand hats already, I'm sure, so.
That's one of her hats a lot of times, she does work with Cindy too, she does the scheduling of classrooms a lot of times, so she's the receiver of the requests.
So it might be something we need to think about. I mean, without getting into the gory details tonight, cause it's so late, my eyes are bleeding, but.
Okay. In case we're all done with policies, I believe.
Keep it on, please.
Uh, informational items, we have anything?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, citizen staff comments? Um, done public, is that necessary this evening?
It is not necessary.
Okay, appointments and resignations, still, still none. And, uh, number eleven?
Mayor?
Hint?
Move for adjournment.